Good evening and welcome to the School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, November 29, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order officially and let the folks know that we had, the School Committee has been in executive session since 6:00 PM this evening, ending a short while ago, to resume here in full session. If we could start the session as we do in joining with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, as we do at all meetings, the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Item number six in the agenda, public comment. Does any member of the public who would like to address the School Committee on any topic, whether it's on the agenda tonight or not, is welcome to do so? Anyone here in the studio? Do we have anyone on Zoom, you know, joining us remotely? Seeing none? Okay, we shall move on. Item seven, Student Advisory Council. We have our couple of members with us this evening. Hello? Can you, oh, we have both live and remote. Great. Well, if you could introduce yourself and your grade and begin with both, what can you share this evening? Welcome.
I'm Lauren and I'm a junior.
I'm Isabella and I'm a senior.
Thank you. Ladies, please proceed.
Report cards went out early last week and you can log into Power School to see your students' grades if you haven't already done so.
Is that as exciting as it sounds? I'm not sure. Yay. Sorry.
Oh, no, it's fine. For athletic updates, we have tryouts for winter sports taking place throughout the week. Good luck to everyone going out for a winter sport. I'm not personally doing any winter sports, but I have friends who are and I know they're very excited. And I also just want to add that I know our football team has a big game this weekend at Gillette Stadium and I'm definitely looking forward to going and watching and supporting the team. So that's very exciting. And for some other school news and timely happenings, there's an early release day scheduled for next Wednesday, December 7. And that's all we have for you tonight, unless you have any questions or anything.
Any questions or comments for our student leaders?
I have a couple. I'd start with, I don't know if you folks catch up on our School Committee meetings after you drop off, but we've been talking a little bit about student members like yourselves. If you'd like to sort of sit in for the longer meeting to offer opinion on some of the things that we talked about, it's something that the Policy Committee is sort of working on. And I think I'd heard rumor that you folks may have been sort of speaking about it in your own space. And so I would just say if we invite you to sort of join the Policy Committee, you know, we can email out, let you know where our next meeting is going to be, if you'd like to sort of share your thoughts on it, if it's something that you folks would be interested in and want to take part in the discussion.
Thank you. I plan on staying for the majority of the meeting tonight, so I will be here.
Great. Maybe we can get you a more comfortable chair? And then from student world thing, I, so I'm lucky enough to get the Visual Arts Newsletter. And so I wasn't sure if you know about the December 1st, I guess they're going to be painting the windows of
Yes.
of a number of the businesses around our community. I think 30 businesses have signed up.
Yes.
So do you have any friends in the Visual Arts area there?
Yes, I have several friends participating. Vanessa Westlake, who's one of the student reps, she's going to be there, so.
Fantastic. Yeah, look forward to it. That's what I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Israel.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you Saturday.
Item eight, consent agenda. We have a motion.
Move that the School Committee approve the minutes of the November 15, 2022 School Committee meeting and accept the minutes of the November 17, 2022 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting and the November 21, 2022 School Committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item nine, Chairs' Comments. First of all, I hope everyone had a healthy and enjoyable Thanksgiving, some time with family and several, a couple extended days off, well deserved. Obviously, a huge congratulations to the Warrior Football Team from their victory over Melrose in a quite, quite a game and a great, great fourth quarter. So congratulations, obviously, to the Warriors, the coaches, the parents, the marching band, the dance team, really everyone that contributes to making the football program as strong and healthy as it is. I wanted to go around, just not necessarily putting anyone on the spot because that wasn't announced, but certainly at the last meeting, I reminded at least the Subcommittee Chairs, if not everyone, to be working on the School Committee goals that we had put in motion back in, at our October retreat. So maybe we can set as a, if agreeable, maybe at the first January meeting to report out on the Subcommittee goals. I think that's a reasonable expectation that we can do on the January agenda. Okay, great. Thank you all. That's all I have tonight. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Just to follow up on some of the information that was shared by Lauren and Isabella. So yes, winter sports have started. This Saturday at 5:30 at Gillette Stadium will be the Super Bowl. Wakefield Memorial High School will be playing Milton High School. Again, it's at 5:30 and tickets are available online. In addition to the winter sports that are starting, we're also kind of restarting a winter color guard and winter percussion, along with, we're going to have two jazz bands and then there's going to be a secondary jazz band. Theater Fest will also be kind of working on a winter production before the Spring Musical as well. So things are kind of busy across the board. On December 8th and 9th at the high school, we will be welcoming a visiting team from NIOSC, the Accrediting Bureau. We've talked a little bit about that in relation to our work with MSBA and our desire to get a new high school and our accreditation and the status that it is in. So NIOSC is continuing to work with us and as part of that, they'll come visit classes, talk with teachers, meet with the administrators, and meet with the district administrators as well, to make sure that we are continuing to make progress in all areas that are within our control. One area that is not within our control is the facility, right? And so that, again, we are anticipating will be cited as a deficient area, but we're looking forward to welcoming the visiting team of five from NIOSC on December 8th and 9th. I'll be able to report more information on that in our December, in our December meeting. So with the Chair's permission, I would like to invite our Walton guests to the table so that we can have them kind of start early and maybe get home a little bit early. So I'd like to welcome Liam and Brian Schmidt.
Liam's last name is Schmidt.
Brian?
Liam and Brian Schmidt. To be there, not really.
Liam's last name is Schmidt.
No, no, I'm sorry. I said Liam and Brian, did I say Liam and Brian Schmidt?
Let's move on.
Introduce yourself. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Liam Dewar. I'm a fourth grade student at Walton School.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Brian Schmidt. I'm the principal at Walton, as you know. Thank you for having us here. Liam and I have been, you know, just talking over the past couple of days about kind of what we would want to highlight for you all about what's been going on this fall at Walton. So I will speak a little bit about our instructional leadership team and some social emotional learning work that we've been doing at Walton. And Liam is going to share a bit about his work on our Student Council and writing and publishing with our school newspaper. All right? So thanks again for having us. Like I said first, I just wanted to share a little bit about our ILT. So our instructional leadership team, as you may know, has teachers at Walton, one teacher from each grade level, myself and a representative from our curriculum team. And we get together 10 times each year and focus on various instructional leadership initiatives. And right now, we're kind of sinking our teeth into social emotional learning. I think the last time I was at School Committee with the other elementary principals, one of the committee members asked, you know, where we saw learning loss. And the other principals who are here and myself all really agreed that we see a lot of learning loss in the area of social emotional learning. Students have kind of fallen behind in their ability to make good friendships and make good decisions at school and behave in positive ways consistently. So our instructional leadership team kind of wants to take stock of how we're currently teaching those skills. So it's something we're focusing on, talking with our staff about, and hoping to develop more consistency in our building on sort of how we teach kids to do these things, make friends, identify and talk about their emotions, resolve conflicts, things like that. So that's one thing we're focusing on this fall at Walton. Alongside that, you know, I think for any of us to be good teachers of anything, we need to really be masters of it ourselves. So I'm trying to work with my staff to develop our abilities as adults to handle tough emotions, work with students who are struggling, work with parents who are struggling. And one way that we're doing this is with a book study that was actually recommended at a consult with the other leaders in Wakefield. The book is titled Trauma Stewardship and our team is reading it together and kind of talking about how we can use the information in the book to basically do a better job of taking care of ourselves and be more present in our work so that we can be better teachers and be more supportive of our kids. So that's sort of an ILT update I wanted to share with the School Committee tonight. I also would like to share something related to the SEL work more on the student side. I did want to bring our new Walton Wildcat to the School Committee meeting tonight. He was unavailable, but we have a new mascot who's joined our community gatherings. And something that the Walton Wildcat is kind of helping us promote, along with Liam and our Student Council, is really focusing on our school rules and what those rules look like in practice when kids do a fantastic job of showing what it means to be safe, be respectful, take care of our school, and do our best work. So an initiative I kind of launched this year to generate some excitement around this is as I'm in classrooms and in the hallways, I carry with me what I call Wildcat tickets. So this is a Wildcat ticket. You probably can't read it, but it just has a little place for a student to write their name and the act, a place for them to describe the act that they were caught doing that exemplified one of our school rules. So for example, last month, we focused on taking care of our school and about 25 of our students were caught in the act, either by myself or another teacher, doing an awesome job taking care of our school, cleaning up a mess in the lunchroom, something like that. They get a ticket, they fill it out, they bring it back to me and put it in a jar in my office. And then at our most recent community meeting, our Wildcat drew a winner and that student got to be principal for the day. So last Wednesday, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, our Walton first grader, Maura Williams, was a principal for the day along with me and got to greet students in the morning and help me make some announcements, help with recess duty, and also give out a few Wildcat tickets herself. So that's just, you know, kind of a fun little thing that's been happening that I'm hoping is generating some excitement around how to be great role models. And speaking of great role models, I'll turn it over to Liam to talk about the Student Council.
So the Student Council is a great opportunity for our fourth graders to promote our school rules by being role models and leaders. Our school rules are be safe. Some examples are this, are walking in the hallway and play, sorry, playing appropriately at recess. Another rule is be respectful. Some examples are this, are don't shout out in class and treat others the way you want to be treated. Another is take care of our school. Examples of this are participating in events to raise money for the PTO and using equipment and tools properly. And then do our best work, which means it doesn't matter if you're good or not, it matters if you try your best or not. Our Student Council's goal is to make students try to be their best role models that they can for the younger children.
Great job.
Thanks. So there are different activities that you can do in the Student Council, some of which are the morning announcements and community gatherings, and you can help plan things called Fun Fridays, which are fun activities to do on Fridays. For example, sorry, I got to participate in writing leaky notes for vendors at our Fall Festival, which was a great opportunity to help the unsung heroes who made our event whole. Morning announcements is a great chance for students to practice public speaking skills and share about what is happening at Walton each week. Then there's our Walton School Newspaper, also known as The Walton Wonder. The Walton Wonder is a school newspaper that allows us third graders and fourth graders a fun chance to see what it would be like to have a job writing for a newspaper. Some of the sections are big news, which are, is the main things going on at our school, professional sports, where students talk about different professional sports, Wakefield Sports, where students talk about sports going on locally, celebrating new students, which welcomes our new kindergarteners and new staff members, and comics, which is a good lighthearted section that is easy to read. I like to write in comics because it makes me happy to know that the whole school is seeing my comics.
So that's our Walton update. Thank you again for letting us join tonight. Great job, Liam.
Thank you.
And we hope to see you again soon. Yeah.
I have to say, what grade are you in, Liam?
Fourth grade.
You're an amazing public speaker for someone in fourth grade. Very, very impressive. Well done. Thank you.
That's his mom.
Good job, Mom.
So you can get it all from your mother?
What?
Oh, you get it all from your mother, the public?
Yeah.
Does the Wildcat have a name yet?
That's a great question. I think we might need to give, he does not. I think, and I don't really even know if he's a he or a she or anything else, but I think we might need to give him a name. Yeah, I think we might need to work on that. Could be our next Student Council initiative. Name our Wildcat.
Liam, do you think if we came over to visit Walton with some School Committee members, you could show us around and kind of share with us what your day is like?
Yeah. I would love that.
We would love that too. More than you know. Did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm curious, I also have a son who's in fourth grade and likes comics. I'd be curious, when you're writing comics, do you have a character that you write stories, like a specific character that you write stories about?
I used to, but not anymore.
Oh, okay.
His name was Mikey Davidson. I thought it was just like, I couldn't think of a name, so I took a common name, Mikey, and just kind of thought of the last name.
Sounds great. Thank you.
The street that the Waltons are on.
That's what I was thinking.
That's great. So the Wildcat, is that, is it a, is it a thing? Is it a, is it a toy, a stuffed animal? Is there, is there a personification at all of this Wildcat in image of any kind?
It's like, it's like a mascot, I guess.
But is it something we can see?
Yes.
Or is it only in our mind's eye?
Oh, no.
So this is a thing?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Is it like a big, is it like a big stuffed animal or?
Someone dresses up in the suit and puts
Oh, it's a suit? Okay.
No, it's a Wildcat. It's just a Wildcat. It's no suit. It's a Wildcat.
I didn't know if it was, you know, just a picture of something hanging in the window or?
It is, it is the real deal, Tom. It's a full-on Wildcat.
Full-on Wildcat.
They come to our community gatherings and get us excited, so they're, they're there with us.
That's awesome.
The real thing.
That is awesome. Very cool.
Great. Well, thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you, Liam.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Come back anytime.
Bring your brothers. Thanks, you did.
I really appreciate how Brian made a connection to earlier comments around goals that the principals were making, you know, when we talked about learning loss and this notion of if we're focusing on, you know, caring for kids and kind of helping them be their best selves, then everything else should fall into place. And I think, you know, Brian kind of lives that kind of philosophy in everything that he does and we're really fortunate to have him at Walton. So thank you. Much appreciated.
Can I maybe ask one question? And I didn't want to get too specific on the subject, but Brian, in terms of, so you mentioned it yourself, like in terms of social emotional learning, it was a, it was a topic that spread across all schools at the elementary level. You, like, we heard it from all of your colleagues. And so when you discuss that work that's happening at Walton, are there parallels that you're seeing with the other schools where, I know you, you folks meet and you talk, so are there parallels that you're seeing in the other schools? Some of the same work being done where you're seeing successes?
Absolutely. I don't know as many details, but I know that each ILT is kind of exploring the social emotional realm and, yeah, definitely doing work in that area. I think it looks a little different in each school, but yeah, all of us are really making that part of what we're focusing on and trying to have conversations about and learn about.
That's great. Yeah, it seemed like the collaboration you spoke of when you sat here with your colleagues was, was at a high level.
Thank you.
So that, to see that work sort of continue is great.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great, great, great group. Very lucky to, to work with these people.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So also the book that Brian referenced, Trauma Stewardship, was kind of recommended to us from the clinicians that we're working with from Seen Collaborative. And so Brian's a little bit ahead of the curve and kind of already having known about the book and already kind of taken and kind of worked that into an adult kind of book group that they're focusing on. So I think that that's going to really pay a dividend at Walton as well. So more to follow about that. So next items on our agenda, I wanted to, before I jump into kind of the logo update, I did want to just give a quick Lehman report on our, bye, guys.
Good night.
Thank you so much again. I do want to just give a quick update on human resources in regard to positions that we have open in the district. Currently, we have 21 positions open in the district. Only five of those positions, a part-time school psychologist, part-time speech and language position, and three paraprofessional positions, are direct classroom positions. All of the other positions are for Wakefield Academy, food service, and for substitute positions. Other than that, I feel like we are progressing well in that space. We are having a little bit of a difficulty finding part-time speech and, part-time speech and language person as well as a part-time school psychologist. We're chipping away at that and there'll be more information to follow on that. But I wanted to just let the committee know that and let them know kind of where we are in regard to difficult positions to fill. So more to follow. I will, I can tell you that these positions that we have open, the work is currently being done through contractual services where Rosie Galvin, our Director of Special Education, is kind of outsourcing this work until we can get these positions filled. So the work in the, in this area is still being done, it's just being done by an external source and not an internal person or persons that we would like to have it the way we, so. That's a very quick update and we'll have more on that. So I would like to give a very quick WMHS logo update in terms of the survey. If you recall, back a couple of months, we had taken a survey of students and we had said that we would update the committee in terms of where we are in choosing a high school logo. We got a letter that kind of sidelined that work in regard to changing the logo or picking one of the, of the three logos. So I did want to just kind of make public the response that we got from students. So this pie chart represents 792 responses that we got from students. The overwhelming choice for students in this area here, it's about 567 responses of the Really, students overwhelmingly favored kind of the W warrior concept. And so, and I make that a point because as we have received our letter from OSU and we're working on kind of pulling back from the current logo that we have, we still want to kind of honor what students would like in moving forward. And so I'd like to propose to the committee this evening that we kind of move this over to the Art Department, just work for a few updated designs that would not conflict with OSU as the current one, current logo does, but we move and ask the Art Department to develop two or three designs. Again, the W with the warrior name, I mean, I make reference to this, so I have it on my, my vest here. You've seen, you've seen this, we've sold this in the bookstore. And so something like this, for, for me to bring back to School Committee so that we can make a choice on this and get this squared away, because I feel like this has gone on for, for a little while. So, and I think students need to, to have this issue resolved. Questions? Yes, sir?
When you say move on to the Art Department, are students involved in the process?
So, no, we, we would ask that, we're, we're looking to develop something like a professional graphic, right? You know, a W with a warrior, just in a different, maybe a different font or, you know, in a different shape that might not conflict in the way that the OSU kind of feedback that we got highlights that, that they're saying that it, the way that it conflicts in regard to dilution, so.
But so we're, we're thinking in terms of like the administrative level of the, the Art Department, not necessarily like student groups?
No, no, we, we would ask one or two of our art teachers if they would be willing to take that on. If they can, great. If not, I think we should, you know, one of the questions that has come up is this idea of having a professional graphic artist kind of look at this. And, you know, a few of our, our art teachers are professional artists, so I feel like that will get us into that space, but I do think like that will get us into that space. But I do think we should kind of double-check whatever we're kind of presenting as options to make sure there's no conflicts or anything in regard to dilution. Yeah.
And again, just trying to stay true to sort of what we, the wishes that have been expressed by the body.
Yeah.
Great.
Yes, Michael?
Doug, just a reminder, did we solicit feedback from eighth graders too, or was it just high school?
No, Michael, we said, that was a big question. If you remember, I think Amy Wall suggested that we try to include our eighth graders. So our breakdown, we had 204 eighth graders, 164 ninth graders, 143 10th graders, 137 11th, and 140 12th with four students that didn't list a grade. So, which makes 792 total.
Good, thank you.
Right? Again, and so, and when we kind of move to the next level and bring back, we will update the committee and everyone that was involved. But I just wanted to just make a proposal this evening and to include this information that we were prepared to show a few months back, but I didn't want to leave this on the side and not have it become just part of the record. Right?
Amy?
Do you have a rough timeline then? Are we still too early, like?
So I think it depends how quickly the art department might be able to turn it around. Would love to get it done in January or sooner. Ideally, it would be great to have done before the winter break, but I don't know how quickly we can get it back.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting. So the art department will come up with what you're thinking, three designs, then the school committee votes on it, or no?
Then they'll move it forward, and then I would make a recommendation to school committee.
Okay. Thanks.
So it seems, it seems to me that we, I think we want to be as true to the original process as possible. The original process, which was fairly well represented with the logo committee going back a year now, right? And that really resulted in the presentation of three options to us last May, June. And I think the option two, which is the one that, if I'm reading it correctly, the one that Doug's referring to, the 71%, I think that, that what got us there is the representation of the, you know, the logo that's under some contention now, right? So I think to be, to be truly mindful of the process that people have worked pretty hard on, teachers and faculty, staff, alumni, community members, students, brought us through last year into a discussion in a presentation in June, then the survey taken of the eighth through 12th graders at the end of September, early October, something like that. And then I think, I, in my two cents, Dr. Lyons, I think your recommendation is a good one. It stays true to that without having to restart the entire process.
Correct.
I think we also need to bring this to some closure without, you know, without making, you know, too much more out of it. I think one of the things that probably needs to be added to the expectations of this evening is that we immediately, immediately, which you can do under your direction, discontinue any further production of the current logo that's under contention.
That took place-
So we will not, okay.
That's already taken place.
Okay.
So that took place back in September, or even maybe earlier than that. I can get the exact date from Brendan, but no new gear was purchased. You know, no, no new gear was purchased. And you can see that the W concept, I just want to be clear, I pointed to the vest I have on, you'll see Lauren's W on her jacket. So the W concept is everywhere, right? And so I, so it's not a novel concept, so.
Oh, no. I think it's, I think it's a no-brainer, frankly, to have a W concept. I mean, Ohio State nor anyone else owns the letter W.
Correct.
So to be able to put a W in a, in a, in a, in a non-Ohio State-like font with the word warrior somewhere, somehow, screening across it, underneath it, around it, let that, let the artists then, you know, say that. The W concept and the word warrior is really what option two is. 71% responded affirmatively that that's their preferred choice. Those are students now, and I think we should just, you know, begin to move, to move forward without re, my two cents. Obviously, we can change that, you all, but I think we should move forward with that as an appreciation.
That's the proposal.
Right.
That's what we're-
But I think it's also important to tell not only the committee, but the community, that we discontinued the use-
Correct.
And the further production.
Correct.
So I, maybe, I'm not, can't speak for Amy's brain, but maybe where Amy was at was, we're not going to start making baseball attire uniforms or spring sports stuff with that on it.
No.
We're not going to, we're not going to have anything new. We're not going to make anything new. We're not going to print anything. We're not going to do T-shirts or hats or buttons or anything with that on it.
Correct.
That has been immediately halted.
Correct.
We need to work our way out of the existing inventory, but no more production of anything new.
Correct.
And once we have a new logo that the school committee has approved, that will then be in full, in full production of whatever gear is necessary for the new, next season.
Correct.
Is that all?
Yes.
I don't know if you're going there, but that's where my brain went.
I was actually just wondering how much longer are we, are we going to decide on a logo?
Yeah.
So. So January would be great.
Yep. Yes, Michael?
So I assume the one caveat to that might be if we don't have enough uniforms, we're obviously going to have to do something between now and-
If we don't-
Don't have enough uniforms for the basketball team.
Correct.
Obviously, we have to.
I do think Brendan has a plan to not replicate. There's, he hasn't done it, nor is, it's in no one's interest to replicate that, right?
Right.
And so we're moving in another direction.
Yep.
Right? And so one of the motivations in trying to, as Aline says, wrap this up, right, is to give the athletic department something new that they can work with.
Yep.
Right?
Makes sense. Second thing is, I'm more of a curiosity, was there much variation by grade in the distribution? I was just more curious than anything else, or was it fairly similar?
I don't have, I don't have the breakout-
I'm just curious.
By grade in terms of who picked what.
I mean, it's overwhelming, so, I mean, but-
Yeah.
Just more curious. It's not a big deal.
Right. So almost 600 of the 792 chose the W concept. So I can get that information from you, if you'd like.
That's all right. It's not that important. No, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you very much. That's it for me this evening.
Excellent. Item number 11, budget items. We have no budget items. We have no gifts. So we're cruising. Item 12, school committee, excuse me, subcommittee reports. Finance, Mr. Bedrow.
Wow. We're moving right along tonight. I think I'm going to lose that bet earlier. So, by a lot. So.
Unless you give a very lengthy report.
Yeah.
You can control this.
So we met last Thursday, I believe that's-
Thanksgiving Day?
No, Thanksgiving, two Thursdays ago. We were one of where you were. Thursday before Thanksgiving. And then we decided our, so we talked a lot about the budget stuff, and when's the next time we want to have a meeting? And because there's no reason until we have something substantial. So we agreed on the eighth, I think, is our next meeting. The idea being that that's when the budget process really gets going in earnest, and it will be a discussion at the following school committee meeting too, in large part. So the budget, as Christine will attest, is going to dominate her lives and many of us perhaps as well going forward. So looking forward to getting started. That's it.
Excellent. Labor personnel, we have not had a meeting since our last school committee meeting. Student services, Ms. Lehman?
Yes, we met on Monday, November 21st. It was a quick meeting. We reviewed a survey. Thank you to Lindsay, Curriculum Coordinator Lindsay Moskow and Kara. I'm happy to work with them. They've been great partners for some of the work that we want to do. The survey is still a draft. I think it's being sent to the principals, and it's going to be ultimately sent to teachers, parents, and high school students asking about executive functioning and learning loss. It's some quick questions. Then we'll use that data to help us assess what needs might be in the FY24. That's our goal.
Sweet.
That's it.
Okay.
So our next meeting, all are welcome to join, is Monday. It's coming Monday, December 5th at 5:30.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask, I'm noticing in your minutes that you were thinking that you weren't going to collect from K through 2.
That's right. Because K through 2, when we talk about executive functioning, a lot of the expectations, they're just, their brains aren't developed there yet as far as like organizational skills, maybe homework patterns. So we just felt that to collect that, they would all be like needs improvement.
Okay. Okay. Was that, okay.
It's okay. No, dude.
Anecdotally, it's interesting, I, in, I, from what I see, sort of in my world, is that it presents early and carries through. And so I know in some instances, like reading interventions and stuff, we talk about like, when can we, can we get access to this earlier? When are the, when are the signs? When should we start looking at this? So I was just curious, what informed the not looking at K through 2? If there might be, you know, a couple years from now, would it be like, oh, if we had looked?
So I think reading intervention is different than executive function.
Okay.
Right? And I think that, you know, when we're talking about, you know, students developing kind of the pro-social skills or the self-regulatory skills to kind of manage tasks, right? And so that's where kind of that intersects with executive function, right? Whereas you're talking about, what I heard you say, is, you know, reading intervention, completely other, it's something else, and we kind of do a screener for that, and I think that we are, I feel like we're on that. And if parents have questions about that or they need support in those areas, I think, you know, we are kind of partners in that work. And I feel like we very much have a handle in that space compared to executive function. Is that fair?
I agree. Kara?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think just to add, it was more on, like, I could kind of go either way. I see what you're saying too about like, just some early markers for disorganization or time management, things like that that could be noticed, but I think it would be hard to give a definitive, like, yes, this is a struggle, because so much of the classroom structures are teacher facilitated or led in terms of routines, organization, structure, that we were talking a lot about, kind of that shift around third grade where the independent student skills really start to amp up in terms of expectation. Kevin next, he was on the committee too, so.
Yeah.
So you're on the committee too, so if you want to jump in.
Yeah, address, address the question. So I think one way to think of executive functioning skills, the way we were thinking about it on the subcommittee, is that we look at like reading or math loss, right? That's what, you know, gets all the news, like, right, the pure academic skills that kids have lost during COVID, or that they're behind during COVID. But when I think about like social-emotional, and I think, and you think of academic, I almost think of executive functioning as kind of like, almost the interplay between the two. And executive functioning really relies on, you know, not just kids' motivation, but also kids' ability to self-regulate, but also have those organizational skills. So we almost thought of it, like, when I, when I initially broached it, I actually thought of it as more a fourth to fifth transition in terms of grade level than an eighth through ninth. And then it just opened up in the discussion that we should really look at all of those, like, we have the middle school grades, but then we actually opened it up looking at third and fourth, because that's the beginning of when you actually start to get the independence, or more independence of the learners. So that's why we kind of settled on that, that age range and not going all the way first and second. It's, it's, so what I, I have to like stamp this with that I am not an educator, so I'm very interested in sort of your thoughts on the subject and Kevin and the committees is that, so I see that executive functioning, sort of if it comes out earlier, by the time it feels like we get to the later grades, to third, to fourth, to fifth, is like we're overlaying academic on top. And so while, I don't want to say there's extra time, but there's, it seems like you have more time to focus on, like, is this going to be a thing? Like, should we put mechanisms in place to support this for success moving on? Whereas by the time you get to third and fourth, is it, are you noticing it more because it's impacting academic processes?
I think we may end up there, and I think that this is gonna, I think this survey, so the other part I don't want to miss, right, is that a survey is dependent on self-reporting, right? And part of students' abilities to do what Kevin described, right, is, you know, self-awareness. And the notion that someone in a five to seven-year-old age group is aware enough and can actually report in a consistent way to give us some, you know, data to work with, you know, I, we would get better information from the teachers in that space. So, you know, is it a possibility that we might be providing, you know, depending on how the surveys shake out, providing some different coaching in different spaces? Yes, absolutely. You know, what would it look like? That's a conversation. But is there a possibility? We're trying to get a handle on, you know, how to support students to get, to get back, right? To get back to where they were, to get, kind of get into that pocket and have the regulatory skills to participate more consistently with kind of continuity. You know, you've heard the principals say, you've heard us say, you know, some students have hit the ground running, others just don't quite have the stamina. They don't quite have kind of the fine skills yet. And so the question is, how might we support them to get those fine skills? How might we coach? And we think the survey might be a prompt. It's not, it's not the end-all, it's not the end-all BL, but a prompt to help us think more clearly about how we might dedicate resources to help coach in that, in this space. That's really the direction. And I want to also open it up to Kara and Amy, who are, you know, in the conversations as well from the beginning. And Rosie, I know Rosie's not here, but I know Rosie would be all over this in a very excited way.
Yeah, I agree with what Doug said. I think if we were to survey K to 2, I think we would probably get the most meaningful information from the teachers, because I'm just thinking, like, not that parents don't have a good pulse on their kids, but just in terms of like seeing their students, you know, homework isn't as much, like, schoolwork at home isn't as much, but I think the teachers would probably give us the most meaningful information. Like, I'm even thinking, we had one of our second grade teachers, Kathy Cristiano at Walton, just this summer, I know Brian gave her a shout-out as well, just did an overhaul of her, her classroom organizational systems, amount of stimulus on the walls, like, you know, she did, she did a fabulous job with that. So just thinking about how that information could be used to maybe even change, you know, classroom routines and structures and organizational techniques and that kind of thing. So, so I guess I say that saying it couldn't hurt to bring K 2 into the teacher-
Yeah.
-survey form, you know, if we feel like that's a middle ground, but I think that would probably be the most meaningful information would be from the teachers in K to 2.
And the feedback that we got from Kathy Cristiano and other teachers is really what has prompted a lot of this discussion or direction. So I feel like we're moving into a very positive space, and I feel like it's, in talking with teachers, they feel like, yes, like, they feel like they're, they're seeing and hearing their, their ideas and their voices in this work, which I think excites them. And that should excite them, right? Yeah.
If anyone ever has the opportunity to see Sarah Ward speak, she's an incredible executive functioning-
She's amazing.
Amazing. And it really, executive functioning is the front part of your brain, and your brain develops as you grow. And so K 1 and 2, there's just not a lot to work with, I would say, right? Because the kids just developmentally aren't there yet. So to expect them to have executive functioning skills, it just, I think the bigger core is the 3, 4, 5, middle school, especially in the digital world we live in, kids are, they're not using their brain. She talks about working memory. It's fascinating. So if anyone, it's worth your time to see her speak.
Want to follow?
Yeah, I look forward to it.
And that might come out of the survey. Maybe we need to bring Sarah in for professional development, right?
She doesn't want a parent.
No, that we can afford Sarah.
Parent university?
Yeah, I know. We're just about to start planning parent universities.
It would be great to have Sarah Ward.
Oh, you could partner with another district.
Yeah, that would be great. She's a bit of a rock star.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, happy to talk more. And when the survey goes out and we collect the data, we can discuss it at length.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Policy and communications, Stephen?
We have not met since the last school committee meeting, so we do not have anything to report.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Liaison reports. Any member share a choose there, any liaison work they may have?
We have another meeting on Thursday on the permanent building committee, so.
Yeah.
See what comes out of that as well. Most of the conversation's been around the folks lately rather than the high school, but.
Okay. Moving on. Item 13, future dates and agenda items. Our next scheduled meeting of school committee is Tuesday, December 13, 2022. Are there any, any items that a member might, this time, might like to bring forward to either that meeting or any future meeting? Dr. Lyons?
I would just like to remind the school committee that on, I just want to check the date, on December 15th, which is Thursday evening, that's going to be the next community forum here at the high school. And so we'll be getting information out to the community as a reminder. I believe Jen McDonald may have already posted it on the, on the town website. But that's going to be happening here at the high school. And in terms of where in the high school, that's still to be determined, but we're working on it.
Will there be tours again?
There will be tours again.
Okay.
Correct. We're also going to be working, we're trying to figure out if we can develop in a short timeline, kind of a video tour for anyone that might not be able to attend. That way we can put that online so people can see and kind of what the high school is like if they are unable to attend and kind of hear someone speak to the areas that need to be improved and kind of what all of the language means that we're discussing in these meetings.
When is the up-down from MSBA?
MSBA is voting on our project in the schematic design is December 21st.
Yeah.
They're also discussing in that meeting, changing the funding formula to increase funding to some local communities. And I think we would be in that window because we would, they would be voting both at the same time. So we would be in that catchment. So I don't know what that means. We're.
Male legislators?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, so we're hopeful that that is significant. And so we will be keeping everyone up to date on that as soon as that information becomes available.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Well, if anyone certainly has a topic, don't hesitate to share with Dr. Lyons or myself as we schedule meetings. So there will not be a second meeting in December, as has been our tradition. So we, after December 13th, our next meeting will be the, I don't have it in front of me, but the first, the second Tuesday in January, whatever that may be. School committee comments going around the table. Would anyone have a comment they would like to share this evening? Dr. Piscatolo?
Just real briefly, we heard about all the success that our football team has had. Just want to acknowledge also some of the other things that have been going on all fall. It's just been great to be able to watch. I think the extracurricular opportunities that are provided by the faculty and staff here are so important for students. Had the opportunity, I think like many of us, to see the play, Clue, a couple of weeks, oh, last weekend. And that was two weekends ago. And that was a really wonderful performance. It was a wonderful opportunity to kind of see the students do those sorts of things. But marching band, track, I mean, there's just so much to be, to celebrate and to feel really good about. So just want to congratulate all those that have been part of those programs and looking forward to seeing the football team on Saturday.
Other member, yes, Mr. Bedrow.
I was going to pull out my 31-minute speech, but I'm going to put y'all through that. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving holiday and of course, happy birthday, Doug. Many more.
Thank you, Michael.
Stephen?
I just want to mention that Wakefield Wakeup is having an in-plane site session on December 6th, where they sort of talk about sort of raising awareness for, you know, being hyper-aware of sort of what's going on in your, in your student's life and maybe in their, in their rooms, some signs for emotional distress, you know, some substance issues. And as we see surveys about rising numbers of, of incidents of mental health issues, you know, this could be something that's relevant and important for some, some members of our community. So that's December 6th at the Americal from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., and 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And it's a collaborative thing from the Wakefield Wakeup, Wakefield Police Department, Wakefield Public Schools, the Elliott Center for Mental Health, and the Town of Wakefield. So just a great collaborative thing going on there. And on the more lighthearted side, Mass Department of Transportation is putting out a contest for students to name 12 snowplows in the six highway districts. So students up to December 23rd can submit names for snowplows and have at it. I can't wait to see what they come up with, but it's open to every student in the seat.
Very good. Any other comments or thoughts to share? I'd just like to share something that Liam from, from the Walton said, and I wrote it down at the time. And it was, it was quite an impressive thought that I, that I really enjoyed. Not only the fact that it, that it came so well articulated, but out of such a, you know, a fourth grader's voice. He said, "It doesn't matter if you're good at something or not. It matters if you try or not." Now, he didn't lend any quote to that, so I'm not going to hold him accountable for if that's his personal, personal thought or if he, if that someone said it first. But I think that's incredibly impressive, his presentation. And it's always so wonderful to see students and teachers and administrators come forward and share the work of why we're all actually here and doing this work. And with all the other things that come with it, of course, come along for the ride. But this is such important work. And when Liam, I mentioned that in his words, it just really struck me as, not only is this an incredibly talented young man, but he, he put some thought and work into his presentation tonight, into what he was thinking. And he landed on a place that is so well-thought and so well, really represents the Wakefield Public Schools. I was just quite impressed by that. So I wanted to share that back out. Very, very impressive thought. So without any further ado, item 15, motion to adjourn.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, November 29, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Good night, all.
Our 56 minutes.
Wow.
Lauren, talk. Good luck, Tom.